Your Honor.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll.
Mr. Leahy. Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Carfield.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Mr. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Fattacante.
Here.
Severance clause.
Your Honor, might you recognize me? The school committee has a ten o'clock rule, so I'm... Well, because sometimes nothing good happens after ten o'clock. But in this instance, we would need to take a vote to override the school committee's ten o'clock policy.
Motion to override the ten o'clock policy by Regina Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Carfield.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you, Your Honor.
It's been a very long day for everyone, and I probably will go directly from here to the breakfast. But I want to thank you for having those interviews, and this is a special meeting. And this meeting is going to be discussed compensation for the next superintendent of low public schools. And with us is Solicitor Christine O'Connor, who will offer and guide us anything that might come forward as far as a legal concern or matter. So what I will do is, everyone has a term sheet in front of them on the contract. What I'll do is, I'll go through each item, and if no one has a problem with that particular item, I'm going to take it that you agree to what's in that term. The first, typically the term of the agreement has been for a three-year period, subject to a one-year extension on terms no less favorable to the superintendent. Any discussion on that particular issue? Everyone agrees to that?
Motion to accept, Your Honor.
Motion to accept, all in favor?
Aye.
Seconded by Connie Martin, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Termination by mutual agreement, where the parties mutually agree the employment agreement may be terminated in writing upon ninety-day notice. Any discussion on that particular issue? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Termination for cause. The committee may terminate for cause. It must serve the superintendent with written notice that the termination of the contract is under consideration. The superintendent may then request in writing a hearing to be held either in executive session or open session at the option of the superintendent. Any discussion on that particular paragraph?
Move approval, Your Honor.
Move approval by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leary. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 The evaluation, the committee shall annually evaluate the superintendent's performance on the goals established by the committee and the superintendent and other matters. Move approval by Connie Martin, seconded by Jackie Dougherty. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Under the paragraph of compensation. Compensation, these figures certainly will not follow suit, so the chair recognizes Ms. Fattacante.
Your Honor, I'd make a recommendation that we outline the compensation as one hundred and forty-five thousand to one hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Motion by Ms. Fattacante that the compensation will be elevated from one forty-five thousand to one sixty-five thousand. Any discussion on that issue? Yes, Mr. Leary.
Just if the maker of the motion would just, I think, obviously, we're going to negotiate that, so maybe the language might have to change a little bit different. I think this portion of it, I mean, I agree with the value ranges, but it's something we're going to sit down with that particular individual and negotiate. I don't know if we should be, how that language should actually be worded. Maybe the city solicitor could give us some advice, because we, it could be one forty-five, it could be one sixty-five, so I don't know.
Madam Solicitor?
At this particular stage, you can leave the language as it is right now in this current motion. When it comes to selecting a candidate and firmly establishing a salary, you have some options that would be available to you. You could go into executive session with the candidate of choice and iron out a final salary number. You could refer the matter to the law department and have the law department report back after consulting with the candidate's counsel and present that back. Or you could establish a number in open session and then work from there.
Mr. Leary?
Just to give you some...
Just following up on that, and I guess I would make an assumption, correct me if I'm wrong, any document we're putting in here is our negotiation part. We could always go back and amend or change, should the body want to do so at a later date upon hiring a new superintendent. Is that correct or incorrect?
Absolutely, and this is just, this was just a term sheet that I put together for your convenience tonight. It's based, as you'll see on the document beneath, on the current contract terms that the committee has already utilized with the current superintendent.
So I think what we're saying here is the pay range would be one forty-five to one sixty-five.
That's my motion, Your Honor, yes.
Does everyone agree to that?
And that what we would obviously negotiate with the candidates.
Yes, definitely.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. So I get the one forty-five to one sixty-five part, but we're not even talking about the percent raise. That paragraph, we're not even, okay, thank you.
So that motion was brought forward by Ms. Fattacante, seconded, did anyone second that? Seconded by Mr. Leary.
I just had a quick question. I just want us to be sure that we're setting a range that gives us enough flexibility in the current environment that we're in. You know, I know that we all received the information from Assistant Superintendent Mulligan regarding superintendent salaries across the base date. I'm actually looking in here for, I mean, let's be honest, for New Bedford, where we know that external candidates are interviewing. I don't see it in here. I don't know if that just means they didn't report, or if I'm, you know, not working my alphabet as effectively as I could.
I don't know what New Bedford is offering.
So am I right, no one, okay. I just, I mean, as I look at some of these similar cities, and it certainly, it's difficult to find similar cities in the Commonwealth. The one that does jump out at me is Brockton, that has, you know, sixteen thousand students, a little bit larger than we are. You know, they're currently at basically a hundred and eighty thousand that they're paying their superintendent when you consider the full package with annuities and all that. The, as I'm looking at their base, their base is at one fifty-one, so if we're looking at, if we're looking to structure it that way, I guess that's an option. But I guess my point for right now is just, if we were looking at one forty-five to one sixty-five, I don't know if we might want to stretch that top level, knowing that we will be very slow to go there. I mean, I'm not advocating that, but I just don't want us to put language in place now that will limit us when we're in a negotiation situation.
Mr. Leary?
I think, and I appreciate what Ms. Martin's stating. I think, obviously, negotiations is a variety of different areas. I think what the city solicitor just stated to us, that all parts of this body of document, we can renegotiate, relook at. If there's a comfort level where we might want to find additional information out, maybe we can delay on the compensation package until a different information becomes available that we could specifically request of the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. And then we can come back to compensation at a later date. That might be, if the maker of the motion wouldn't mind doing that, that might be an intelligent, kind of another way of looking at it. But any part of the document, as I'm understanding it, is always open up to negotiations, depending on what the major, what the majority of us want to do.
I think this is more or less a guideline, a way of setting the pay structure. You could put the language in there, one forty-five to one sixty-five negotiable, and I know where you're coming from, Connie, I really do.
And I understand that, that's fine. I guess I was just thinking that if we set a range in open session, and then went into executive session to have this conversation, and then came out of executive session with a wild, we're not going to come out with a wildly different number, but with a number that exceeded a limit, that that could be an issue. But as long as we have the flexibility, I'm comfortable.
Madam Solicitor, you don't have a problem with that?
Again, in all practicality, these terms are going to be modified to some degree. And whoever the candidate is, they may have specific requests and requirements. There's nothing in here, for example, about professional organizations that they may want as part of their contractual employment agreement that they would belong to. There are other more specific clauses that I did not include in here that will likely be included in a final new contract. And again, it is just intended to be a guidepost right now.
Mr. Conway?
Yes. So it's my understanding that if we pass this part of the compensation at one forty-five to one sixty-five, in an executive session, that can change. It could go to one seventy, is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is that this is the initial starting point. You then, the committee would then have to decide, once you've selected a candidate, procedurally, how you want to then go about fine tuning the details of a contract. And again, those could be done in essentially one of three ways. There might be some other way out there, but essentially, they would be, you could go into executive session with the candidate of choice. You could refer the matter to the law department, that's what was done by the city council with respect to the city manager's contract. And I dealt with the manager's attorney. Or you could do it, as you're partially doing right now, in open session, and state what the committee wants to hold on to as essential terms of a contract.
So again, for clarification, so we're not limited to the one forty-five to one sixty-five? I mean, I understand what Ms. Martin is saying, and that, okay.
Right, and again, there will be some other decision-making as you go forward in this process.
Thank you.
Just real quick, and I mean, I think it's a negotiation, so obviously, you're looking at associations, that's a benefit. So you may be taking, you know, reducing whatever you initially want to offer. So it's kind of a, the way I look at it, it's a boilerplate, kind of, here's the range, we believe this position to be worth at this time. However, if you've got some different issues we can negotiate out, it could go higher or lower. Thank you.
I think the advertisement indicated one forty-five, and it's negotiable, so, no, what, correct, what did it say?
It said competitive, Your Honor.
Oh, competitive.
Competitive.
Why don't we take a roll call vote on this particular issue? So we can really cast that in stone. Roll call.
What's money you have to... Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Severance clause. Upon death, retirement, or termination, superintendent of a state will receive one hundred percent of all accrued vacation and one-third of all unused sick leave. What seems to be wrong with that paragraph?
The one-third with the sick leave, unused sick leave, I'm not sure if you want to put that in writing or no, but again, it's a negotiation, so I would make a recommendation of motion just to leave the hundred percent of all accrued vacation. That's obvious, it's their accrued vacation. I don't know what we want to do with unused sick leave going forward. Again, that's a monetary negotiation. I would request at this point that that be stricken from this document. Obviously, that's something we can negotiate back into at any point in time. That's my frame of motion.
Motion to strict the unused sick time. Mr. Conway, seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Fine, thank you. Reimbursement for expenses. Mileage reimbursement at IRS rate, as well as a three hundred dollar monthly travel reimbursement. That's up for discussion.
Your Honor, I'd make a recommendation that we only would supply the superintendent with out-of-state travel. Or long-distance traveled. No travel within the district would be reimbursed.
Motion by Ms. Fattacante, just to reimburse the superintendent for...
Out-of-district travel.
Out-of-district travel, do I have a second?
Well, just a quick question, and maybe to the city solicitor, I don't know the legal stuff here, but is it, if we have a person that's traveling, aren't you legally required to reimburse them? I'm not sure if that's still applicable, or...
Well, you could have, you could come to a different contractual arrangement in terms of what the reimbursement is. For example, what the contract currently provides is a flat fee. The, at this point, you could leave the reimbursement as something, a term to be discussed later, and not come to any sort of firm commitment at this point, as part of a term sheet. Sort of a narrow issue, anyway.
Would the maker of the motion like to do that? I mean, I don't...
May I ask, Your Honor?
I just want to make sure that we have parity across all of our administrators, that if this is something that's included in our other administrative contracts, I don't want the superintendent to have a different criteria.
I think what was in this contract is because the superintendent bear traveled a long distance to come here, and they were reimbursed for that travel. That's, I believe that's what that is. And whoever the new superintendent is, hopefully, that is not in the contract, they're far from law, yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. Many people drive long distances to get to their job, so I would not compensate for that. However, I believe what this is compensating for is traveling within the district and traveling outside of the district. My feeling is, traveling within the district should not be compensated for, but traveling outside the district should be compensated for.
That's the form of a motion?
I would make that motion, but I see that through you, Your Honor, the superintendent would like to make a statement.
Yes, go ahead.
Just when that was negotiated back in two thousand, that was, it was, I think, understood as standard practice among employees in the district that they were, they could be reimbursed for mileage within the district, as well as out of the district when they travel on school business, but it was also a way to supplement a salary.
Right, and...
To supplement the base salary, just so that, those were the two reasons, it didn't have to do with my commute.
Again, Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we did not, that, and I recognize it was to supplement the superintendent's salary. In the old days, we would have called it a telly move, but because we are looking at a tighter budget this coming year, my preference would be to only pay the superintendent's mileage when that person traveled outside the district. On school business, absolutely.
Seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All in favor of the motion, let's take a roll call on that.
Roll call, thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay, passes.
Vacation. Superintendent shall receive thirty working days, exclusive of legal holidays, and may culminate up to sixty days. Per diem, benefits payable shall be based on a work year of two hundred twenty-seven days. Do I hear twenty-five? Ms. Martin?
If I could, and recognizing we can change this along the way, so that's fine, but I do think that something we need to always be cognizant of is that we have, you know, staff that have similar contracts. And I am not going to be comfortable putting in place a vacation package for superintendent that's less than her direct reports, or, you know, obviously, we have staff who are working on shorter work years, looking at eight-week vacations in the summer, and all those things. So I just, you know, what we decide now, I recognize, is negotiable, but that's just one thing that I do think we need to keep in mind.
Ms. Dougherty?
Through you, I have a question for either superintendent or Sue Mulligan, about what is the standard vacation time for administrators in the district and principals? Full-time. For the year-round staff.
Are you talking about superintendents in general, or...
Assistance.
Other members of the school department, year-round staff. What is their average vacation?
Four to six weeks.
Okay.
Is the typical.
Mr. Leahy?
Is there a motion on, because I would make the motion that we start at four weeks and negotiate it up. So is there a motion out there?
No, there's nothing.
All right, I would make a motion that we just started at four weeks, and, you know, if we need to, we'll negotiate it up.
I'll second Mr. Leahy's motion.
Seconded by Ms. Fattacante, any discussion on that motion? No discussion? Let's take a roll call on that, just a...
Anything involving money?
What's that?
Anything involving money, should be a roll call.
You got it, June.
Okay.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
No.
Ms. Dougherty?
No.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Four yeas, three nays, it passes.
Let me just discuss that briefly. If we get into negotiations, and whoever that new superintendent is, they say, "I like five weeks," then it's, I think what John brought forward is four weeks. But let me tell you something, in the workplace, I don't know anyone who gets six weeks' vacation. That's unheard of, and it's, what's that?
Every teacher. I mean, I'm just saying, in the industry.
In the workplace, I'm talking about...
Teachers are in the workplace.
But teachers don't, teachers work a hundred and eighty days. They don't, we're talking about year-round staff. I don't think that can be...
I absolutely understand that, but I think that the comparison still needs to be in place, that we can't negotiate one contract out of sync with every other contract we have.
That's, you know, negotiable, and we can certainly negotiate that if need be, okay? On the second page, is there anything on the second page you would like to discuss?
Your Honor, I think we skipped sick leave. The bottom.
I'm sorry, sick leave, fifteen days of sick leave for each year, it is culminating, so...
Your Honor, fifteen days of sick leave, I believe, is consistent in every single contract in the district, so I would make a motion to leave that at fifteen days.
Seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. Now we'll turn to the second page. Any discussion on the second page? Yes, John, Mr. Leahy?
On the second page, it says agreement of employer, that one?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I would like to discuss that we order Carla Brooks-Baird to stay for another two years. But, no, is there anything on here to change? This is a personal thing, isn't it?
I think the law department and whoever the attorney is representing the new superintendent can certainly...
Can we change anything?
Madam Solicitor, you want to...
Sorry, what's the specific question?
The second page, about the agreement and so forth, that's strictly with the contract issues and the law department.
Yeah, the agreement is being provided to you this evening, you know, for those that didn't have it, such as the mayor, so that you would see where the terms that I was presenting the committee with tonight were coming from. And that's the only reason that it's before you tonight.
Your Honor, if I might...
So there's nothing to change?
There's nothing to amend, no, certainly not.
I think that there is nothing for us to amend. I think the, everything that you see after the first page just spells out the first page in much greater detail.
Right.
So I don't think any action is taken, needs to be taken after that first page.
We haven't discussed healthcare, but I imagine the healthcare package just carries on...
Yes, absolutely.
With the next superintendent.
They would be, that superintendent would come to the district, and they would take the district's healthcare policy, yes, Your Honor?
Correct, and that's what this current contract provides. That whatever the current offerings are, that's what this contract provides, and presumably, that's what a future contract would provide.
I would just like to bounce back the compensation, just briefly. Annual increase is four percent, and then there's a performance of five thousand dollars. I think that's something that we probably negotiate with whoever the new superintendent is.
Absolutely, Your Honor.
Yes, I agree.
Have we missed anything? Have we discussed everything? Is everyone happy with the overall package? Why don't we take a roll call vote and adopt this first page, the term?
Motion to adopt the page with the changes made, Your Honor?
Motion by Ms. Fattacante to adopt the page with the amendments and the terms of the first page. Seconded by Mr. Conway, any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Are there any other discussions? I don't know whether to go home, have conflicts or my dinner.
Oh, 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 yes, we do, we do have other items. Your Honor, two other topics.
Where, okay.
One of them is mechanism for sharing feedback from site visits.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mechanism for sharing feedback from site visits, and this, Your Honor, would be, I believe, Ms. Dougherty and Ms. Martin are going to be taking the long trip to Connecticut.
Mr. Leary.
And Mr. Leary, and others will be taking...
Can I interject there? I spoke to Solicitor today.
Yes.
And that would more or less interact in a legal meeting.
Okay.
But if the mayor asked the personnel subcommittee to go on this adventure and get out and investigate the site, which would be Ms. Martin, I believe, Mr. Conway, and who's on the personnel subcommittee, then that wouldn't be termed as an illegal meeting. Is that right, Madam Solicitor?
Form an ad, or you could form an ad hoc subcommittee, but in terms of going on the site, on the site visit, the, nothing could be debated or deliberated. It would simply be fact-finding and information gathering by individual members, and no, there could be no, again, deliberations on any of the subject matters that are before this body. And you would also need some sort of a mechanism in order to get the report in, and maybe the neatest way of doing that, cleanest way of doing that, would be through a subcommittee meeting of this ad hoc subcommittee or personnel subcommittee, where the subcommittee would prepare then a report to be presented to the body as a whole.
So, Madam Solicitor, what you're saying is the mayor can form an ad hoc subcommittee, which consists of Ms. Martin, Ms. Dougherty, Mr. Leahy, and we wouldn't be illegal with the sole purpose of a site visit, yes?
Excuse me, Your Honor, we actually need two ad hoc subcommittees. One would be the three of us who are driving to Connecticut to do the onsite visits, which would be Mr. Leary, Ms. Martin, and myself. The other would be the committee members who are doing a conference call...
Okay.
To the school committees of the outside candidates. And we could have one meeting where both ad hoc subcommittees present reports to the whole committee based on our findings. Does that sound like that would be...
Well, we would actually need three ad hoc subcommittees, because there is a group of people who will be going to the high school on Monday to actually interview staff at the high school regarding the in-house candidates.
Mayor, if I could, I guess what we should...
Okay, go ahead.
Just, there's like three different things going on. One, there's, we're contacting the outside candidates' school committees for just basic information regarding the two folks from the outside. And we're doing something similar in-house as well, so we should probably just make three quick subcommittees, have a meet on the same day, give the basis of information, so we're meeting the criteria set forth by the law and under the advice of counsel. And whoever wants to be a member of whatever subcommittee, you could easily draw that up, and we could go forward.
Let me ask the Solicitor for a ruling. If the mayor appointed the committee as a whole as the ad hoc subcommittee, wouldn't that suffice? Or do I have to name individuals to each ad hoc subcommittee?
No, you could do that, you could have an ad hoc...
So that would... We'll do whatever you want.
It's, again, it's cumbersome, though it may be, it may be a better way to specifically name these ad hoc subcommittees, and then have one meeting where all of the committee members, which will, in essence, as Committee Member Dougherty had indicated, will comprise everybody, anyway.
So after the meeting, we'll confer, and I'll get the names of the various ad hoc subcommittees, and June, would you take that information?
Yes, I will.
And let it be known, and I think that'd be the easiest way to handle it.
Absolutely, okay.
And we could do, and I can make a suggestion, Mayor, as far as the subcommittee meetings, we're making the deliberations on the twenty-fourth of March, I believe is the date. We could easily do the subcommittee meeting prior to that deliberation, and I think we could do it under your advice and legal counsel.
Right, that would be fine, and again, the, these committees would only be going to gather information. There could be no deliberations on anything that's coming before the committee.
Ms. Martin?
If I could ask, would we be, so if we're going to be meeting on the twenty-fourth, we'd be, each ad hoc subcommittee would be reporting out about their... each ad hoc subcommittee would be reporting out about their fact-finding. Would we be requiring any kind of written report, and would we then need for you to name a chair for each one of these ad hocks if one person's reporting?
I can name the chairs of those ad hoc subcommittees after the meeting, and we can finalize that, but you could give a verbal report or a written report, whatever, if you give a verbal report, it's going to be recorded in the minutes, so whatever you feel is appropriate.
He voices, I just want to know, each one of the three would...
Madam Solicitor?
Just, just a quick note, also, the, the benefit, I think, of having a chair of each one of these committees is that that person can then be responsible for, at the committee, once you have the, the subcommittee meeting, because that'll be the first time that all the members will be able to actually discuss, that, that person then can be charged with submitting the final report to the group as a whole.
And I want to thank and applaud that ad hoc subcommittee that's going to take that long ride to Connecticut, so, it's like a three-hour ride, so thank you for doing that. Yes, Ms., Ms. Dougherty?
I have some concerns about how we're going to report out, because we're not taking the trip to Connecticut till the 20th, and this group will be voting on the 24th, so that only leaves us right before the meeting, which I know the timing is difficult for some members. If we're meeting at 6:30 to make the vote, what time will we need to report out, at 6:00, and, and what if people can't get here at 6:00?
I, if, just be, I mean, I think what we're going to need to do is that our meeting starts at 6:30 with the ad hoc report, and we push back the vote, and I know that we do have another item, the, a school committee hearing scheduled at 7:00. I don't know what point in time we decide that that just can't happen.
Okay, yeah. I think we need to cancel that.
I'm sorry, I have another question through you to the city solicitor. When we discuss our findings, are there certain parameters in terms of what we should or should, I mean, I'm thinking if somebody says something negative about a candidate, how do we handle information like that in terms of when we report out on this?
That raises an interesting issue, tip, because typically, going through the interview process, the executive session privilege that exists for reputation and character, generally speaking, would not come into play. Not that it can't come into play, potentially, but generally speaking, it doesn't, because these are new candidates before you. But what you're doing is, is actually gathering information from another district where these are not candidates, but actual employees, where you may be gathering information that goes to the character and reputation exemption provided through the open meeting law. So it's potentially a hybrid, and I think maybe the best way to address it is that when and if that type of information surfaces, we can address it that way, and maybe, maybe the chair of the subcommittee or the ad hoc subcommittee, if they get that information, they could make a request to the Law Department for an opinion prior to, to see how maybe best to proceed.
Ms. Martin?
And can I ask the, what would be the limitations with internal candidates? Because we'd also have the same information, you know, that could or could not be coming forward. Would we have the same requirements, or would there be a higher level of, of expectation for confidentiality?
Right, you may have, you may then have access to information that would fall under that exemption. If you were to use the exemption, then the, then the person has to be given notice, and they would have a right to be at the executive session if it was something going to their reputation or character. It's, the, the law recognizes that at times, that particular exemption is sometimes difficult to define, and, and that's why I'm suggesting that it may be best to find when and if it comes up, given, given more specific facts on it.
Hopefully, those reports from the ad hoc subcommittees will all be positive in nature, and I don't think we're going to go out and, and do negative reports, so. Any other discussion on that particular issue? What would you like to discuss next?
Parameters for public discussion, Your Honor, of committee members' considerations in casting their votes for superintendent. This is the issue that Mr. Leahy raised. He would like to have a public discussion of why he would want to vote for a certain candidate or not vote for a certain candidate. I believe that that needs to come to the city solicitor.
Madam Solicitor, could you give us a ruling on that?
Sure. The, once you have this meeting, it'll be a special meeting, the meeting will be opened, the purpose of the meeting, which will be for the selection of a new candidate, will be made, and at that time, then, it, the, the meeting is open to debate and discussion amongst members as to your, as to the, as to the motion, the selection of a, of a new superintendent. It will also eventually require a, a roll call vote that will be in the, in the form of a, they call a voice vote, and it'll be a roll call vote, your name will be called, you then give the name of your candidate. Once that portion of the process begins, all debate, all discussion is then stopped until the process is concluded. If that answers your question. So, prior to, prior to that, once the meeting is opened and the purpose of the meeting is given, you may then debate and discuss the issue that's before you. Once action is taken, however, on the roll call vote, and, and action has begun, then all debate and all discussion at that point then ends.
Okay. So I would make the motion that prior to our vote, we have a brief discussion on just, you know, nothing on character, but just strengths and weaknesses of our choice.
And, if I may, you, you wouldn't even have to make the motion. I mean, that's part of the process.
Oh, all right, okay.
But I imagine everyone's discussion will be in a positive way, and not negative towards anyone else. Ms. Fattacante?
I was just going to say through you, Your Honor, to the city solicitor, so that we don't get ourselves in trouble, because that's a strong concern of mine, what can and cannot be said during that discussion? Can you give me an example?
Can you? What you're referring to?
Yes, can I say, I don't like, you know, Joe Smith because ABC and XYZ.
Because he, he...
Because of, I don't like, I don't like candidate, I'm not going to vote for candidate Joe Smith because of ABC and XYZ. Can that be said?
Well, let me give you, I guess, an example. I mean, typically, in the, in the course of discussion, what would be perfectly acceptable would be that if, in the process of explaining which candidate most impressed you and why, such as, you know, by way of an example, a candidate that had experience in a large urban setting, that then would probably explain that if there are candidates that don't possess that type of experience, why you didn't ultimately give them your final consideration. If there are specific things, typically, the, you know, as, as the mayor had indicated, most of the time in this type of a process, it's, it's really the reasons why you're supporting somebody, and not necessarily, there, there isn't any great necessity to go into reasons as to why you're not selecting somebody. The focus is always on who it is you're selecting. If, if there was a close call between two candidates that you liked, and you, and a committee member wanted to elaborate as to why one candidate is going to, is going to get your vote over, over another, that, of course, would be permissible. Obviously, there could never be issues presented that were beyond anything other than the, the, the criteria that's before you, the normal criteria in selecting a superintendent, if that answers your question.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor.
I, I think if we stay on a positive plane, and you can indicate why you're supporting candidate Y, that's fine, but once you get into, "I'm not supporting candidate B" in a negative way, then I might have to pick this up, and, I, I, no, I just can't, we, we, we want everything on a positive, positive outlook, so. Any other discussions? Please bring them out now, don't walk out the door and find out your, yes. Nothing?
Is this a motion to adjourn or a motion to recess through you to the scribe?
Is the meeting after this?
Yes, nothing. There's nothing.
I think, I think it would be appropriate to say a motion to recess, because we're going to continue...
Okay.
These interviews tomorrow evening, so, Madam Solicitor, is that in reason?
Well, the, the special meeting for tonight, is there a, already a posted notice for tomorrow night's special meeting?
Yes, there is.
If there's already a...
Is no special meeting?
Actually, there is no special meeting tomorrow, so, Your Honor, it would be a motion to adjourn, because we were in the second meeting, which was posted for 9:15.
I just want to, I want to check with the, the solicitor, so we're on legal...
All right.
Madam Solicitor, are we recessing or adjourning?
I think it's adjourning.
Right, but tomorrow night would, excuse me.
Is no special meeting tomorrow night?
But you would still be having a meeting tomorrow night. It still has to be posted, you still have to go through all, because you're convening as a, as a body, so you would still...
It is a special meeting.
You would still need, it's still an, an open meeting that, that, so, it may be best to...
Adjourn?
To, to, if you, if you have not pub, this has not been posted, tomorrow night's meeting?
It is posted.[1719.41]